Thank you. Good afternoon. I call to order the February 4th Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Council members in attendance today include Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Kritzer online, excuse me, Council President Kritzer. Online, we have Councilmembers Sala Houdin and Councilmember Anderson and myself, Presiding Officer Councilmember Stewart. We have a full agenda today, so we're going to dive right in, first with our public works items and then our planning and community development items. Before we kick off, I just want to acknowledge that we have had a weather pattern in the city of Redmond that puts some teams into action a little bit more than others, and I want to just acknowledge and thank the members of Public Works who have been keeping our streets and our residents safe through these last couple of days and really appreciate their work on that. Here to introduce the very first item of our agenda tonight is Deputy Director Vanji Garcia. To introduce item number one, approval of the consultant agreement with HDR for the Avondale Road pavement management and waterline upgrade. This is on Avondale from Northeast 90th Street to Novelty Hill Road. Welcome, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Councilmember, and welcome. Evening, good evening to council on this subject. Thank you for appreciating Public Works. We're very hard at work, and they've done some great planning to address the weather. You stole my thunder about this consultant agreement, but this is an important project that I want to highlight. This is both a transportation project and a utilities project where we've looked at the scope, and when we're digging up the road, we also are improving things underneath the road. So we have Doug DeVries, who is the Utility Engineering Manager, and Jeff Thompson, who is Senior Engineer. You want to?
Yeah, this is, it's both, like Vanji mentioned, it's both a pavement overlay and a waterline installation. We've got about 25 curb ramps we're also doing as part of this project. That's a big, that can be a big chunk of a project is the curb ramps. We've got 2,200 feet of 14-inch AC waterline line that we're replacing with 16-inch ductile iron. We've advertised for consultant services in July. We received five proposals. The winner was HDR. We determined was the most qualified, so they got the project. The design contract with HDR is 1.2 million. That also includes some geotechnical work and one other consultant. The current total project budget is 10.1 million, and the council consent agenda is for 2025. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions on this item that is being considered for consent on March 4th? Council President Kritzer?
No questions, just a comment that, you know, this is a really important roadway, a really important project, so appreciate the thoughtful work on this and advancing this as soon as we can.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Just a quick question for those that are listening to better understand why we're doing both the overlay. Of course, that one is very apparent because we'll get, you know, some notices like, hey, what's going on with Avondale? However, with then doing the waterline underneath it, what are going to be the benefits that the city is going to be able to look forward to?
On the waterline, the AC waterlines have been problematic throughout the country. It was, it's not a very good material for waterlines. After, say, 30, 40 years, they start to degrade, and we get a lot of leaks on them, and they become unreliable. And we want to improve the reliability of our system by replacing the AC water mains wherever we can.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, and like my colleagues have mentioned, this is kind of a three-for-one when it comes to things that Redmond residents care a lot about. We're getting a safer roadway, safer water supply, and improved bike infrastructure in this project, so I really appreciate that. I noticed on the project sheet, which is on page 76 of this very hefty council packet tonight, that it looks like we're actually, the project timeline has moved up overall about a year for delivery of the whole project, and it's coming in a little over $1 million under the initial estimate as well. So is there anything you'd like to say about that? And we'll continue to watch this, obviously, since we're still in design.
You know, I'm going to defer to Jeff to see if he has more of the history on the project.
Sure. I think the construction, the reason it shows it's coming in light is when we plan, we have a contingency for a lot of uncertainty, and we tighten that up a little bit. So that's why it probably shows that it's a little less, $1 million less than originally had planned.
I do like to add, though, with, I'm sure that with coming to council for many projects, that underground work always can uncover things that we don't know about, so that's why we like to estimate for situations that we can't see until the road is digged up.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Council, are there any concerns with this item going to consent on March 4th? Seeing none. We will see this back in a couple, in about a month. Thank you so much, and I'll just mention for the viewing public that actually, one of our asks in the state legislature this year on behalf of the city of Redmond is to fund the transition away from these asbestos cement water pipes that have been so problematic, and so we are working on that through the course of our legislative program during this very legislative session. Thank you. Item two on our agenda tonight, we're sticking with Public Works, is the adoption of an ordinance amending the Redmond Municipal Code Section 12.25 regarding temporary construction dewatering. With us is Deputy Director Garcia, as well as Jessica Atlickson and Erin Mulver. Welcome.
Well, I have just a short connection that this is tied to also the Redmond 2050 Code updates, and Erin and Jessica can answer any specific questions since we talked about this during committee.
All right. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Erin Mulver, Environmental Programs Manager, and along here with me is Jessica Atlickson, Senior Environmental Scientist. And so we're here to provide you with an update on the code amendments to RMC 1325 pertaining to temporary construction dewatering. We'll talk through the background leading up to the code amendments, the proposed code changes themselves, and then our next steps in the council process, and also answer any questions you might have. With that, Jessica?
Great, thank you, Erin. I'm very excited to be here today to talk about the proposed amendments for the temporary construction dewatering or TCD code. We are requesting a study session on the 25th of February if council would like additional information from what's provided today, and then the proposed amendments be on the consent agenda on April 15th. So a little bit of background, as a reminder, we've been working on the TCD policy since 2020, really to address tensions between water management policies with the city and development within the Critical Aquifer Recharge Area, or CARA, which mainly impacts downtown and Marymore Village. This will be the final phase of the TCD code amendments. Council has given us consistent and really clear direction on where we want to go with this, which is limiting dewatering to utilities, crane footings, and, let's see, sorry, elevator pits within the CARA, which was given several study sessions in 2021 and two staff reports in 2022. So these limitations will really help minimize impacts to the drinking water utility. The TCD core team has been working with the Redmond 2050 team, as Vanji mentioned earlier, to address building heights and parking ratios so that these TCD limitations will not impact or limit development within the CARA. So these proposed amendments include limiting dewatering to elevator pits, crane footings, and utilities within the CARA. Obviously, utilities need to have the flexibility because we're not going to put sewer pipe above ground, right? So like, we need that flexibility there. Additionally, with the crane footings and the elevator pits, those are typically smaller areas than, say, like an underground parking garage, and so those dewatering rates are a lot lower, and the duration of dewatering is lower as well. So that's why we're allowing those as well within the CARA. The proposed, oh, excuse me, I also want to mention that dewatering less than 500 gallons per minute will continue to be allowed in the CARA. The proposed effective date is June 28th, which is concurrent with the proposed amendments that you'll be hearing later from the planning team that will address the building heights that need to happen concurrently with this code amendment. We have gotten stakeholder feedback from one individual representing a development firm. That came through the Redmond 2050 comment process. The comment was that certain developments within downtown in Marymore will need additional parking just because of the residents, the type of residents who will occupy those buildings. And so we worked with the Redmond 2050 team, and what we've done is added one additional building height onto the maximum if dewatering will occur for underground parking. So we've made that concession based on stakeholder feedback that occurred late last year. So we're proposing a study session on February 25th if council wants additional information as to what was given here. The topics for the study session would include just a really brief background on dewatering and what impacts it has on the water utility. We can go into more detail about the code amendments, both for dewatering and for what's with planning to increase building heights within downtown in Marymore, and then we can talk more about stakeholder input. So I'd appreciate feedback from council if you would like that study session, and if so, if there's additional topics that you would like to hear about.
Great, thank you. So council, just to double down on the logistics, study session is at the end of the month. We are not going to consent, as was printed in the agenda, in the month of March because this will need to be adopted in coordination with the other pieces on April the 15th. So what questions do we have for the study session on the 25th of this month? Council President Kritzer?
Well, I'm really excited to see you back here. I remember when we did our first study session on this and you gave us the dates to complete all the phases, it seemed really far out, but here we are. So very exciting and looking forward to the study session. I think, given the fact that some of our council members weren't there as we started this process, that it would be helpful to have that background. I think at the time when we started studying this, we got all that kind of analysis and also, I think, even to revisit how council got a couple options, and we chose the most kind of pro protecting our environment and our water option in terms of balancing how we think about this. So I think just spelling that out, actually, just while, as we were talking about, an email from someone who's watching who said, "All the acronyms, I don't know what it means." So I think also if we can just, in plain speak, explain a little bit about how this is really about protecting the water that we drink and that we get from Redmond, and even revisiting kind of how Redmond gets its water, if we have a slide on that, and why this is a piece of that. Although I will also note, I think this is important, given that we also have a lot of important salmon habitat that runs through this area and draws a lot of that water. So I'm excited about this work for multiple reasons. The other thing that I think would be helpful for that study session would just for us to be able to be clear on, from the last time we saw this, of how it's evolved and what we're seeing now is, has there been anything changed from what we initially were envisioning? And if it's possible to have a very easy-to-understand before and after in terms of what can be constructed, what can, in terms of, like, for example, the example of parking garages, of what happened before, what will happen now, and what the process looks like, what the process will look like, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. So for me, this looks like it's just a kind of a language cleanup in the code amendment. Is that a safe assessment?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Oh, the language in the amended code looks like it's kind of just language cleanup. It doesn't look like there's much more than just being more specific with what the dewatering applies to?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the biggest change in the code update will be that dewatering will be limited only to utilities, footings, and crane pits. Right now, dewatering can occur within the CARA for any structure.
Okay.
So it'll really take away the bigger footprints of parking garages.
Yeah, basically limits the rate and volume that you can dewater at. So right now, you can dewater over 5,000 gallons per minute with an approved plan. That's a big impact. So this limits it to 500 for any development, but then if they need to dewater over 500, they would need to rethink how they're going to build their underground structures, with the exception of elevator pits, footings, things like that in utilities.
Got it. Great.
Do you have a question for the study session?
That was the question they needed to answer now to know that if I needed a study session, and based on that, I don't, but I agree with the proposed questions that Council President Kritzer outlined.
Great, thank you, Vice President. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I'd love to know in our study session if there are developments that would be impacted that are underway and permitting. You know, one of the things that we hear about is permitting being slowed down, different changes being slowed down, and just knowing what we're looking at for that. And then echoing Council President's request on water, you know, Redmond, we produce 50% of our own water, and just kind of the slides as for like, how do we get our water this way, then it's just gone over one more time. Thank you.
Thank you, and seeing no questions online, I'll just ask you, Ms. Atlickson, when you introduced the change that was made at the end of '24, you identified it as a concession. And so what were we conceding, I think, the way the Council President asked for it? Just let's have it be really, really clear as we study that change in particular. Here in the city of Redmond, we of course want feedback from our stakeholders, but we don't make policy based on one individual or one entity's needs, right? We try to be collaborative. Any other questions for the study session? Wonderful. I'm going to move us along then, as we've got a busy day, but thank you all so much. We're going to transition to the Planning and Public Works part of our agenda. This afternoon, with us introducing the next few items will be Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development. Item number three on our agenda tonight is approval of a three-year contract with Green Rabino for Tourism Public Relations Services in the amount of $225,000. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Presiding Officer Stewart. Good evening, everyone, and you are actually going to be hearing from almost all of our planning staff from economic development, tourism, transportation planning, and long-range planning tonight. So yes, we have a full agenda, and we're really excited to announce that our first-ever tourism public relations contract is before you this evening for introduction, and I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Layler to introduce this item and talk about the program.
Thank you. In alignment with the 2526 budget, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, also known as the LTAC, recommended and the council approved an annual tourism public relations budget of $60,000. An additional $15,000 in annual funding will come from grants and other funding sources for a total annual fee of $75,000. Staff conducted a comprehensive RFP process, receiving 10 proposals from public relations agencies. Following two rounds of scoring by a review panel, Green Rabino was selected for the contract. The agency will bring their expertise to elevate Redmond's tourism initiatives and outreach efforts. They will collaborate closely with the current tourism marketing consultant for the experienced Redmond brand and work under city staff's management and direction. The agency's work will be informed by the adopted tourism strategic plan and key aspects of the economic development plan. We will also coordinate regularly with the communications team to ensure they are informed of upcoming tourism PR initiatives. This item is scheduled to move to the March 4th consent agenda if approved by the council. Thank you again for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Layler. This is really exciting as we get going on implementing that beautiful new tourism strategy. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Sala Houdin, welcome.
Thank you. Really excited about this and the prospect of having a comprehensive tourism PR plan moving forward. Two quick questions, the first being, I noticed in the scope of work that there was a mention of the World Cup, and would just love to know sort of the, if there are any details ironed out about support that we might get for World Cup promotion? And then the second question is around just previous experience working with any municipalities and whether or not there's any lessons learned that would be best applied to Redmond.
As far as World Cup, we're in the process of hiring our limited-duration World Cup staff member on our team, so we have made an offer, and we're working through that. We'll have more to come on what we will work with with the PR agency. I don't have the kickoff with the PR agency until after the consent agenda, and at that time, we just wanted to make sure we covered it in the scope of work so that it wouldn't be an additional fee. So at this time, it's to be determined on World Cup coverage and how those support, but it's certainly a part of the scope of work as written now. And then the second question was on municipalities. So Green Rabino, I'm assuming is who you're asking about. They are based out of Seattle, and they have extensive work with current partners that we're working with, as well as others. So they do, they were chosen because of their extensive municipality work, as well as the fact that they're local and they really understood Redmond as a local entity.
Great, thank you for both of those answers.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Council President Kritzer?
I'm really excited about this. I was wondering, I noticed there was some reporting in the scope of work, and was curious if they'll be able to come and share it with council as the plan develops.
I'm sure we could work that in. Not a problem. Yep.
Well, great. I'll just add a quick comment that I think maybe one of the sentiments you can take away from the conversation this afternoon is that we, the council members, are already getting lots and lots of questions about two major events, Light Rail this year and World Cup next year. And so just to the extent that all of our teams, we know we just adopted the budget to authorize you to begin all this amazing work, but as you can, keep us up to date about what you do have as far as information that we, the extension of the communications team, can help share with community and help generate excitement and get people in tune with the right information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any concern with this item going to consent on March 4th? All right, Ms. Layler, we'll have this back. Thank you so much. Moving on to item number four, we're going to stay with Director Helen for the rest of the afternoon, folks, and item number four is the amendment to the Washington State Department of Transportation Trail Lease Agreement for the Overlake Village Station Pedestrian Bridge.
Thank you. Again, we have two of these agreements before you. One is for, the first one that we have is for the Overlake Village Station Pedestrian Bridge. This is the first and final amendment to that agreement that you will see. This amendment updates the trail lease to incorporate all the final documents, which include things like as-built drawings and record drawings and easements, and there are no other changes to the agreement that council has previously approved. So with that, I'm joined by Michael Hints and Micah Ross, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you all for being here. Are there questions from the council on this item?
And this one, too, is also scheduled to go to consent on March 4th.
Wonderful. I'm not seeing a lot of questions, and that's because this really is kind of one of the last stages probably of this project. Thank you for including the detail in the packets that you did. I just want to thank all of the city staff over the last decade-plus that have been working to make these bridges come online. Council, are there any concerns with sending this item to consent on March 4th? All right, well, we'll do that, and then item number five on our agenda, as previously stated tonight, is the amendment to the Washington State Department of Transportation Trail Lease Agreement for the Redmond Technology Station Bridge. This is the white one with the pretty canopies that crosses the highway.
Correct. And this one had more agreements attached to it or amendments. This is the third and final amendment, but it's relatively similar to the one for Overlake Village, and it updates the trail lease to include final documentation, such as the record drawings and the easements, and there are no other changes from what council previously approved. It's also requested to be placed on your March 4th consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council on this item? Great, seeing none, we unceremoniously conclude a huge body of work, so thank you all so, so much. We do appreciate you, and we will have this item back for consent on the 4th. Item number six on our agenda is the, yes, item number six, is the addition of 148th Avenue Northeast Safety Corridor Project to our capital improvement program and accept Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funding for the project.
Correct, thank you very much. The city has been awarded $1,518,000 in Highway Safety Improvement Program funding to design and construct the 148th Avenue Safety Corridor Project, and this project is identified in our local road safety plan and includes safety improvements to Willow's Road, from Willow's Road to Northeast 31st Street. No matching funds are required, and the project, you might be wondering, we just adopted the budget. Why are you just bringing a CIP amendment to us? We actually received this award information in October, and by that time, the CIP had been pretty much finalized. It needed to go through governance and our normal internal process to, that the acceptance of the grant. No other matching funds are required, and so now this is before you to add both to the CIP and to accept the grant funding.
Thank you, Director Helen. Are there questions from the council on this item? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
No question, just a comment. Thank you, Director Helen, for the back information as to why we didn't see this in the budget, so that folks following along, that they would then understand why we're seeing it now, so thank you for that clarification.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. So this is separate from the 148th project that we kind of removed from our, I'm seeing a nod already, from our ask at the state level and federal level a couple of years ago. Yes?
That is correct. We have a lot going on on 148th, and it's really exciting.
We need it. Okay, the only other thing, comment I have is I love seeing in this about the feasibility study of removing what I think of as slip lanes for the right-hand turns. I don't know if that's the technical proper term. I like the still ability for the right turn lane, but not the like one that allows you to go super fast, and the key locations that are in this area, I know, are very dangerous. So I'm excited to see what comes out of the study.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for your hard work on this, and so great to get this funding. My only question is, do we have any concerns about the funding, given that even though it comes through WashDOT, it's originally federal grant funding?
Haven't heard anything from WashDOT yet from the program administrators, but we'll definitely be following up with them.
Okay, great, thank you. But congratulations, this is very exciting.
Thank you, council. Are there any concerns with this item going to consent on March 4th? Wonderful. We will have this one back, thank you so much. And I did want to say, thank you for including the, I'm going to call it a matrix, for the addition to the CIP. It was helpful to see how a project is justified in making an addition to the CIP, so thank you for including that. Item number seven on our agenda today is the acceptance of Highway Safety Improvement Program grant dollars for the funding of a citywide speed study, continuing of conversation from what the council's been studying the past few weeks.
Another transportation project, so we're asking the council to accept the grant's funding to conduct a citywide speed study. This was also a study that was identified in our local road safety plan, and it will provide us data and recommendations on how the city can adjust speed limits to prioritize safety for all road users. We actually have secured the grant, but you'll remember as part of your budget that you did approve Public Works to take on a speed study for $200,000. This will, actually, this citywide speed study will also be led by Public Works, and we would like to bridge the local funds to implement the findings from the safety study once it's done, from the speed study.
Wonderful, thank you for that update. Questions from the council? All right, I will chime in with a question. I'm trying to get to the page number, but I'll just go from memory. The speed study will evaluate reductions. I saw somewhere in the memo that the scope was where the difference between moving from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour in the city could make a meaningful difference. I wondered how, if you could contextualize that a little bit for us, since we've been studying the past couple of weeks, these high-injury networks and then these high-risk networks. For instance, the street we've been just discussing, 148th, is a high-risk network, but also has speed limits well above the 25 mile an hour threshold. So could you contextualize a bit of the scope of the speed study?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So there really are two main components to the speed study. One will be a focus on arterial and collector streets, so our main streets in the city, 148th being one of them, and that is where the data will be collected, analyzed. And that is where the data will be collected, analyzed, and recommendations will be made as to if there should be a speed reduction on that street, like immediately, or if more design changes need to happen to achieve that target speed. The other component is the local streets component. We will not be collecting data on local streets, but rather, it will be focused on an implementation plan for reducing speed limits from 25 to 20 miles per hour on local neighborhood streets. We may, I mean, in some cases, there may be some targeted data collection, but we're not going to collect data on every local street in, in Redmond. So there's, there's two components. The high-risk network that you referred to, that is completely focused on our arterial collector network.
So if I could summarize to check for understanding, on the arterials, the speed study will collect new data and help us figure out where reductions in speed limits could make a difference, or where that alone wouldn't do the trick, so we also need some design investment or some capital down the line. And then on the local streets, we're intending to collect no new data, but actually begin, begin the planning for implementation of a reduction.
That's right.
So in the city of Redmond, we're on our way to reducing local streets.
We're going to evaluate that and, of course, bring that recommendation, if that is a recommendation.
I guess what I'm asking is, is the recommendation already baked, and this is lining up the steps? Or is this the determination of if that recommendation could succeed?
I think that we'll certainly bring that recommendation. We know from implementation of that reduction on local streets in other cities, both in Washington and around the country, that that is an effective strategy at reducing speeds. Will other traffic calming measures need to be implemented in some cases? Probably so, on the, on the local streets. I should also mention that the high-risk network and high-injury networks will be inputs into the recommendations around speed reductions. So there will be a number of factors that are considered in the, in the speed reductions for arterials and collector streets.
Great. Thank you for tying that all together. And could you remind us when the speed study is expected to be completed and back here for, for review?
Yeah. As Director Helen mentioned, Public Works is leading this, this effort originally. I think the study was to be completed in 2025 due to some, some staffing shifts that may be delayed somewhat, but that is our, that was the original target, was to complete the study in '25.
Okay. Thank you. Council, have I successfully inspired other questions on this topic? Council President Kritzer?
You did inspire one question with me. So is, is there any chance that the speed study in any areas would recommend that we actually raise speeds? Only, only thinking, because I think there are some places where people naturally go faster, much, like, there are some where I see people driving typically 15 or 20 miles per hour over the speed limit, and it's, it's like it's not calibrated right. And I wonder if we were closer to it, if we could enforce it better, almost. I don't know if that's a silly question, but just curious about that. Or if really its scope to, should we, where should we lower speeds?
It's not a silly question. That could be an outcome. I think there's a philosophical question, and that is, what is, what are the target speeds that we want to achieve? And how do we, how do we achieve those speeds? So if we see a disconnect between the speed at which people are, are driving and the posted speed limit, that's probably due to the design of that roadway. So it invites people to drive faster. So then we might want to take a hard look at how that roadway is designed and what, what design modifications need to be made in order to achieve that target speed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. More of another comment, because that was where my question was going, was what are the target speeds? Is, you know, is it that we're trying to reduce the speeds across the way, thinking about Vision Zero? However, if we then have areas where, and we've had residents contact us about going down a particular street, I want to go faster, it just doesn't make sense here, do we have that target speed? Are they currently at the, the, the right speed limit, you know, air quotes, right speed limit? And then as we are, I'm going to hold that till, till I get a little bit more information and email to you about the sec, the second piece of it. Thank you.
Okay. Completely fair. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on March 4th? Okay. Wonderful. We'll have this one back. Thank you all so much for your work on this. Really appreciate it. And with that, we will transition our staff presenters here a little bit. Item number eight on our agenda tonight is the Redmond 2050-2025 Code Package Planning Commission Recommendation. Introducing the item is Director Helen, and she is joined by Jeff Churchill. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening again. Each year, the growth, oops, that's not it. Last week, at your joint meeting with the Planning Commission, staff mentioned that the Planning Commission was wrapping up its review of the recommendation for the 2025 Code Package, Part 1 and 2. Jeff is here today to describe the package and the commission's recommendation in advance of the study session that's scheduled for February 25th. We're also joined by Kim Dietz, who's been working on that package, and we can answer any questions you may have. But Jeff has some remarks to begin with.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to be here with you. As Carol said, over the past few months, the Planning Commission has been reviewing a significant update to development regulations chiefly designed to implement the zoning consolidation that is part of Redmond 2050. That effort is, is called the 2025 Code Package, and it has three parts. The commission is completing its review of Parts 1 and 2, and in fact, at its last meeting, directed staff to go back and produce a report for its recommendation for its approval next week at, at its meeting. Part 3 is updated to design standards that you all provided some input on last week at the joint meeting. That is not the topic for today. Today, we're just talking about Parts 1 and 2. Part 1 is called Zones and Uses, and it focuses on land uses and zone-specific regulations, and it takes us from 50 zoning districts in the city down to 20. Part 2 is called Requirements and Incentives, and it focuses on citywide regulations, and especially in this package, on affordable housing regulations for zones that we haven't addressed yet, on the green building program, and expanding the applicability of the green building program, and on consolidating incentives in a new incentive program chapter. And you may remember reviewing incentives for Overlake in 2024. So this would be incentives for most of the rest of the city. And that's, it's a really exciting chapter, and the Planning Commission had a really great discussion about it. The Planning Commission's discussion was wide-ranging, but mainly focused on the new neighborhood mixed-use zone and how areas in the city to be zoned neighborhood mixed-use were selected, and also how areas could be selected in the future to expand those opportunities. Second, they spent a lot of time discussing and evaluating the provisions for mandatory inclusionary zoning, especially for Marymore Village and the mixed-use zones. And third, as I said, they provided some really great input into the incentive program priorities, helping to shape the incentive program that will come to you after they approve the report. 90% of this is summarized in their issues matrix. There's one more meeting that they had subsequent to publication of your packet, so there'll be a little bit more in the final issues matrix. Their meeting to recommend approval is next Wednesday, the 12th, and so very shortly thereafter, we can get you their entire recommendation, which will include all of the chapters of the code that they reviewed. If you want to take a sneak peek, the 20, the Redmond 2050 site has all the drafts online already. However, they don't include all of the amendments recommended by the Planning Commission yet, so that's the only reason I would say you might want to hold off till you see it next week. I understand that that probably impacts the, the detail of the questions you can probably provide this afternoon, and that's totally fine. What you do know now that we can start preparing for the study session on the 25th, I would love to know, anything else you, we would love to receive that by email, if you receive the report on the 13th, and we, and we know we need to produce the packet the next week after that, maybe by the following, by the end of the President's Day weekend. Would be great to get any of the rest so that we can be best prepared to use that time effectively on the 25th.
Thank you, Jeff, and Kim, and Carol, and your whole team for your work on this, and thank you for teeing it up. Just logistically speaking, I will point out that the council is not going to have a council packet on that weekend of the 15th, 16th. So actually receiving this on the 13th has now become my council packet for that weekend. So logistically, there, there is some good news on that front. Okay, council, parts 1 and 2 of the 2025 Code Package. What questions do we have as of today? Council Vice President Forsyth.
And I hope I'm addressing questions in the right sections, but I'm just kind of, like, through reviewing the matrix, I have a couple of key things that bubbled up for me. I noticed that it said they were looking at the EV-ready parking that Seattle was doing, and I was curious about more conversation about the, or juxtaposition of the Summit County, Colorado, and what they were doing there. I noticed it in the matrix of, that was more spaces that are actually built instead of just ready. And we've talked about that a lot here in this space as well. Sticking to the EV topic, I noticed the question of scooter charging and was curious about if that included bike charging, public EV bike charging as well. And then looking at the public realm diagram, thought that was really handy and helpful. Interested if they looked at how Bothell has done their public realm space, since theirs has a protected bike lane closer to the sidewalk, and that way you don't contend with people opening car doors. And that's definitely something I would like to see in our city in these new zones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Other questions? Okay. Council President Kritzer.
I'd just say, looking forward to this conversation and reading through the, the recommendations, I think I'd prefer to be able to look at them and look at the comments. And I would request, actually, as part of the packet, if we can continue to have this, these matrices, which is really helpful, but for me, it was reading through, I was like, I want to know what they're referring to. So I think being able to put those two things together will be helpful. And if possible, at that study session, since we, we will be, we'll get to read through them, but to be able to have a little presentation. I know typically with these types of items, we often jump right to the council matrix of questions, but in this one, I think it'd be helpful to have a, a walkthrough presentation before we jump into the Q and A on it. So that would be my request for that study session. But looking forward to, to this discussion and really dig in.
Thank you. I will note for the record that Councilmember Anderson is no longer with us. Really appreciate the chance to both read the matrix, understand what the conversation has been, and contextualize that with what these parts are trying to accomplish. So I guess a couple broad comments for the study session on the 25th. Since we now have an adopted Redmond 2050, as we review not only the decisions that are, or the recommendations of the Planning Commission and the staff from this point forward, but I would love to see how those decisions are contextualized in the adopted principles. And I could see from the matrix that, you know, many of these policy areas actually have principles in Redmond 2050 that are in tension with one another, but it is helpful to kind of remind ourselves and hold ourselves to the standard of, these are the guiding principles we said we wanted to govern the city with. And so when we come to these challenging moments, what, what did we intend to do to wrestle with these hard questions? So that's something that I thought about as I was reading the matrix. I think a good example of that is actually the EV parking spaces recommendation for new development. This is a topic that we sent back to the Planning Commission, so of course, it's worth spending some time understanding the analysis and the recommendation that they are going to bring forward after the 12th. So I'd like to spend a little time on that. We've also spent a lot of time over the last couple of years discussing the Overlake Center, including the vision, including the incentives and all of that. As we discuss these other centers now, it would be helpful to get an understanding of the vision there. And in places where we have made departures from, say, the Overlake incentive package to something that might fit better in another center of the city, it would be helpful to understand the delta between all of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions for the council? Great. So we will look forward to receiving the recommendation on the 12th, 13th, something like that, and be back for the study session on the 25th. Appreciate your work on that. Thank you so much. And we are right on time. Way to go, team. I really appreciate you all. Item number nine today is the 2024 Amendments to the King County Planning, Countywide Planning Policies, with Director Helen and Jeff Churchill.
Thank you again. Every year, the county does look at adoptions to, or changes to its countywide planning policies, sometimes referred to as CPPs, in case we slip with the acronyms. And the Growth Management Planning Council recommends amendments to the countywide planning policies. Jeff's here again to, with us today to talk through the recent adoptions to the 2024 amendments and that were adopted by the King County Council and sent to the cities for ratification. So with that, Jeff?
Okay. Thank you very much. So the, the countywide planning policies are a document that ensures that planning issues of countywide concern are addressed in a coordinated fashion across the county. For example, growth targets and the boundary of the urban growth area are two really big examples of things that are addressed at the countywide level. The last major update to the CPPs was at the end of 2021. Those were ratified in 2022. And then at the end of last year, the Growth Management Planning Council, which is a group of elected officials from around the county, recommended a set of minor amendments that the King County Council approved in December and subsequently sent to cities for ratification, which is how the process is laid out in the countywide planning policies themselves. There are kind of two amendments, or two kinds of amendments. One is minor modifications to the urban growth area near Maple Valley to remove three properties from the urban growth area and repeal a property-specific development condition, so a very surgical change to the urban growth area there. And it makes it coincident with the northern boundary of the city limit and removes properties that Maple Valley did not have in their potential annexation area. Second, some minor language changes to the planning requirements for countywide centers to make it, to make the planning requirements more flexible in how they are executed. There's no longer a requirement, or would be no longer a requirement for sub-area plans for countywide centers. The substantive standards really would not change. That's important to Redmond because we have two proposed countywide centers, and so it gives us a little bit more flexibility in how we plan for those. The council has three options. The council could proactively ratify the amendments, for example, by resolution. The council could be counted toward the cities ratifying by doing nothing. The threshold is 30% of governments representing 70% of the county population. Or the council could vote not to ratify the amendments. Given the minor nature of the amendments, staff recommends taking no action, allowing Redmond to be counted among those cities in support of the amendments. But the deadline to take any action, if you desire to do it so, is March 24th.
Thank you so much, Jeff. And I'll just acknowledge that I represent the Sound Cities Association on the Growth Management Planning Council, which has deliberated these items over the last year. Are there any questions from the council on these items? Council President Kritzer.
I would actually just ask our chair if, if you'd like to share anything about the discussion at GMPC around these items. Would be interested in, in your perspective.
Sure. As Jeff said, these, these ones, particularly, you know, around Maple Valley and whatnot, very, very specific, very, very surgical, and I actually think that that's a sign of good government. You know, government is responsive when things just don't make common sense. And sometimes it takes a few meetings to get it all, get through all the hurdles, but I do think that government is responsive. Currently, the GMPC, as I've been keeping you updated in committee reports, is considering a couple other amendments that feel a little less surgical, related to a couple of cities, but I think we've come to a good position on that, and I'll continue to keep you updated on those as we go. Our next meeting is in March. Any other questions from the council? Okay. So I will just ask for agreement. Is the council in agreement with doing nothing and letting these CPPs move forward as ratified? Great. Thank you so much, Jeff. Really appreciate your work on that. And I believe that concludes this item. That item was informational. I'll just quickly, since we, we actually have time left over, I'll say thank you all so much for being here. And we, as the, myself as the chair, in partnership with the directors, have begun to work on kind of what this committee is going to tackle this year. I think a couple of highlights I want to let you know about. I do expect a work plan to be able to be in your packet next month. I am trying to have a draft in hand before I walk into the council. I am trying to have a draft in hand before I walk into the council retreat, so that I can be the most informed, leading into any conversations about what we're working on this year. Couple of things, you know, this Director Helen and team have let us know that we're going to be working on monitoring housing production and permitting timelines and all of that, so you can expect some of that to happen in this committee, some to happen in Councilmember Sal Houdin's committee, especially if it's that capital A affordability stuff. We're going to continue forward with our quarterly CIP updates, and that is where our, the bulk of our earlier conversations on the municipal operations center are going to be housed. So those CIP updates might feel a little bit bigger over the next couple of quarters as we get into some of those questions. We're also going to continue to keep the council updated on the public works accreditation process. That process will end up with a pretty substantive code update that the council will need to consider and take on later in the year, but more to come in your packet next month. Anything else for the go-to-the-order? All right, thank you very much. We'll see you back 7:00.